All right, give me just a second and we'll start the workshop. All right, it is 9:31, 2nd day of July. We'll open up this budget workshop. All commissioners are present along with treasurer, auditor, and county attorney. So. Watson, would you like to...
Sorry, I was making sure that we were putting our burn man on the website.
Thank you.
Okay. You sure you've got it, Vegas?
Yeah.
Can we get Brian to come share the department dispatch burn man?
Would you mind letting dispatch know about the burn man, please? Thanks, sir.
All right, so today, I wanted to kind of camp out on the capital request report. I think you should all have updated copy. What changed on there was if you remember correctly, last time, we did not have the Zerker contract, and so now that is under the sheriff's office. As you can see, the balance on that is 137, 976. So the grand total, as we put here today, is $1.7 million, 1.718, and to be exact, on capital improvements or capital acquisitions equipment. So I know that some of you have been meeting with some of the department heads and culinaries of this list down a little bit, so I wanted to camp out here a little bit and see where we are and if you have any changes that we need to make to this, we can reduce. So with that, I turn it over to you guys.
We do on road and bridge.
Okay.
Do you want to start there or where you want to start?
That'll be good. 4:30, road and bridge, all right?
Y'all speak up if I'm speaking out of turn. We take dump truck off.
The four dump truck?
Yeah, dump truck and other pickup.
Which, the mowing truck or...
No, we need to, we need to see if we can leave the mowing truck on there.
All right.
And these, uh...
It's the four by four half ton.
Yeah, it shouldn't have been on there to start with.
All right.
The sand spreaders. If we're going to be in the sand spreading business on ice storms, I say we need one of these. If we're not, we don't need to be in the sand spreading business. That's just me.
Any other input from y'all?
And they're, uh, they're pretty high. One's, uh, I recommend stainless steel if we're going to get one.
Is this 24,000 that's illustrated on this different from what you're showing there?
Yes, yes. But 24, I wasn't going to get it anyway.
What are you showing per unit on the stainless steel?
19.
19.
For one?
Well, no, it says 22. 22, 999.
Is that for one?
Stainless for one.
For one, okay, so 23, 999?
Yes.
So 24 is what you said?
Well, but, yeah, but this is for two and it's not, but...
Okay, so I'll update that, are they still...
That's up to, I mean, that's, y'all wanted to debate, uh, discuss that? I'm the only one that lives on a county road on this court.
Well, I don't get my road sanded, I live on farm to market.
I know. So it's up to the court. But my point is, we don't need, ours is antique, we don't need to be doing it no more if we're not going to buy a new spreader.
The problem with, yeah, and the problem with the units we have now is that they are antiques. The newer units are hydraulically driven and move the bulk material back to the impeller that spreads it out the back end rather than having to tilt the bed to, for it to move like there.
Plus, we can get rid of two old trucks that we...
Yeah, because they slide into a distant truck instead of having an extra old truck sitting around with a spreader unit in it. Gotcha, so these, these guys slide in, yeah? Yeah. Well, you can see them when you go by the highway department, they've got them hanging out there. So am I hearing that we don't want any spreaders or we want one spreader?
That's the question that Larry's proposing to, for discussion in the court.
Where? Yeah, they did use spreaders the other day on two bleeding roads because of...
Yeah, for, for the state.
Yeah, well...
Top mountain.
No, I'm talking about the bleeding roads they did for 12, 304 the other day.
You're talking about on your, uh, on 12, 11, 12?
They used, they used them on that on bleeding asphalt, so...
Let me ask this question before we discuss some of this. The old units that we have currently, um, they lasted probably, I don't know how old they are, but they're, they're, they're 20 years? With the new units, not stainless steel, how much, did they have a price on money?
6,000 difference.
So they're 6,000 cheaper?
Yeah, but my, my point on stainless steel, you may not use it for three or four or five years in a row, might not even use it. They would, they would last long, the stainless steel will last longer. It'd be a good investment if that's what we're going to do.
This 22,999 is for one or two, Larry?
For one.
It's the stainless steel ones, that's...
Yes. $2,200 delivered. And we started that in the 90s when there was commissioner lived up on Summit Ridge. Anyway, when I first come in office this time, we had a snowstorm or whatever and a guy phoned me and said he couldn't get out, I told him I couldn't get out either. So I had one call in six, seven years.
Well, if you want to leave one in there for right now until we get through the quarter more of the budget and we see where we're at, and we need to get rid of 23,000, then we got that option. Is that good with y'all? Leave it in there at this time? Because this is all preliminary anyhow.
And it doesn't like the dollar amount changes, it's just the, did you say 23,999 or is it 22,999?
22,999.
Well, wait a minute, it's 19,449.25.
To deliver it?
To deliver it to us, one unit stainless steel, or 14,874.25 for a carbon steel unit. I guess the point I'm trying to make is the units we have are carbon steel. They've lasted 20 years. I don't feel like I'll be living in 20 years, so... I don't know that everything else won't wear out in 20 years.
Well, I'm, I agree with you, but it may not be used every year and you just...
Set there.
If you ever use it, that salt in there, it'll start corroding and don't, it's not...
It's not rusted.
They don't, they're not as, yeah, fixed yet, is...
Right.
So I don't know. It'd be easier to keep clean.
Well, I agree with you from the standpoint, it sounds like the stainless steel would be the better with the irregular use.
Anyway, that's it on road and bridge that I know of.
So leave 23,000 in there for right now. We got a $21,000 short, well, we got it.
Well, no, is that what you read here or here?
Well...
By board is 17,249, $2,200 shipping, so it'd be 19,449.25.
The list is 22,999.
19,5.
20,000.
20,000.
And that's delivered and ready to rock and roll?
Yeah. Of course, I can read off of that.
You say 4,000 right off the bat.
Okay. That would subtract, what are you saying, um, subtract from that 1,718, 078?
You have a road and bridge? Excuse me, I'm sorry, what was the...
What was total?
The new total on your, on your equipment is 52,000 right now.
It's 104,000 out of it.
52,000. It is the, we've got a 20 and a 32 that are in there for road and bridge.
So the 156 went down to 152, I mean to 52?
Yes, sir.
And that one total would be down to...
1,614, 078.
Okay.
I talked to Jeff at golf course, there was something he was buying this year.
He was going ahead and buying those blowers.
The backpack blowers?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And I think I went ahead and told him to go ahead and get that, the TV, but told him just to go to Walmart and buy, I mean, I went and bought one for my brother-in-law over the weekend, it was $400 for a 44 inch, yeah, with all the internet that he was wanting and everything for drinks, so, you know, the 1,200, I, you know, in his, in his kind of rough environment, I told him I'd rather buy a $400 one and, you know, it lasts four or five years and then buy another $400 one instead of...
Yeah, so minus 600.
And this, uh, I talked to him about this trito trailer?
Yes, sir.
I don't know what, I got it marked off. I don't know, I don't remember what that was. I know I got it xed out, I talked to him, I don't think he needed it.
Put a question mark by that.
Yeah.
And we didn't know about the NSN contractor. We know, right? He was going to find out what that's going to be and how much that's going to be. So we mark out the blowers and mark out the TV, that'll be taken care of this year.
And I'd say the trailer.
Go ahead and mark out trito trailer.
Now, give me one second here, guys, I'm going to have a little bit of IT problems here.
Because the pump station definitely needs to be done, it looks pretty bad. Wellhouse, I think we, we talked about, he's going to take care of that wellhouse this year. We had the money, we was going to take care of that 2,000.
He's going to try.
Do you remember what size of portable generator he was talking about? That's about right, 15,000.
I probably got it here.
It's way too good.
No, because you can buy those ones, they're cheap, you know?
Also, talked to Mark on the fire department. There's two items here that he can, that he might do it out.
I suppose we won't have more people here to argue and fight for what they want.
Do they know they're supposed to do it?
Anyway, Mark said, uh, the generator and the expansion on the storage building.
Okay, on the fire, who now?
Wait a minute, wait, not the generator.
Fire department.
Not the generator.
Yeah, I think the generator needs to...
No, it's this other, 36,000.
The SCBA?
Jeff, this is John, we're in budget hearing, give me a call at this number, thank you.
Do you remember what we discussed?
I remember the, the storage expansion.
Yeah, and then this other, this 36,000, I forgot what he said.
He just said, give me equipment, what is it?
Anyway, he said he could do without them if he had to.
Did we ever nail down on this rescue engine if we're going to try to split it up over two years or three years? Because that was an argument last time we were here.
Well, that's, I don't know, it was at least going to be two.
Yeah, at least.
I think whatever deal we can get.
All right.
Isn't it?
I mean, I...
I mean, two if we could, you know, maybe it was better, you know?
I had heard back you had proved it, so, I mean, I...
I told him, but...
I did it all at one time. I said, well...
Do what now?
Didn't I hear that right?
You did.
I did, I heard that.
He had my okay?
Commissioner Holt, he said, go ahead and plan on getting that right away, so I'm like, okay.
Well, it's not going to be right away. It's going to be a year before it's built.
If we do it over three years, it's 185,000 we have to allocate. If we do it over two years, it's 277,500 right now, and the price goes up every time we talk about it. And that's what we were talking about, if we decide to move forward with that, that we slide that over into a tax pool account, right?
Correct, we would actually budget create a...
Well, there market for that. All right.
Probably slide it over like at the end of January or February, once we get our main, you know, 90%, 95% of our tax money in, then we'd actually slide the, the money over. And it would be a charge on the budget for whatever number that is, that would be going over to the tax pool.
So since we're preliminary, why don't we do the 277,500 right now at this time for the two-year, and then we may reduce that to the three-year before we get totally done. And then Larry, you think he wants to do away with the scuba equipment?
That's what he said, that's what I've got marked here. I don't know the reasoning, but...
You know anything about that, Brian? Why he might, is it like they don't run out for another year or two or...
I told him we had to cut it somewhere, and he's, that's what he...
I don't think I'd call him, I'm...
No, that might not work, you can try. If you get through, let me know. And do away with the expanded building storage. Get away with that?
I know that for sure.
All right.
I'm pretty sure he was, he could go skip this year on the air pack.
Okay.
Is that what this is? It's, it's SCBA?
Self-contained breathing apparatus.
Okay. It's not scuba?
We have those in rotation.
Yeah, a lot like it, yeah.
Okay, that's what, yeah.
The ones Paul and I cleaned out up there looked like it was brand new, up there at Land.
Yes, but apparently, we said those would belong to the sheriff.
Yeah, we're in a budget hearing, we need some input from you, give me a call at this number, thank you.
Well, I hate to take it, uh... Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, the, um... The, from what I understand, that's for the paid guys, that for volunteers, they can actually last longer. And that's why some of our equipment goes to like walnut.
Right.
So, you know, uh, you know, I guess we... I don't know what you want to do in regards to that, if you want to say this equipment's for the paid guys and this equipment's for the volunteers, but...
Yeah.
No, there's nothing like to put, there's a thing where, uh, to be hooked up with the law, you know?
Put purple legs on it or something.
So right now, you're taking, uh, bringing equipment off and you're taking the building storage off?
Right, so that draw, and I did, I plugged the rescue engine into two things, which crossed that, that down to 36, 5.
All right.
For 429.
Do you remember what that, was the generator was for?
Uh, the upper buildings.
Yeah, 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 I remember that.
We did, he wanted two, oh, you're talking golf course or fire?
No, fire department.
Yeah, they installed the one on the lower building and he wanted it for, he wanted the next one to be for the upper buildings.
I'm going to put a question mark by that because I need to challenge that a little bit for my own court group.
I'll just, I'll just put that in as a different color, how about that?
And is it a need or a want? That's my question. Because we've gone, how many years without one? So why, why, why do we? I know we got the radios and stuff downstairs.
Well, and the, the generator, the, the need that came for the lower building, I think was during this citywide blackout. A lot of citizens were coming to like recharge their breathing machines and, and now they've got that. I think what they had to do during that time was start one of the engines, because I said, you know, but now we've got it, now we've got a natural gas powered generator on the lower building that will run that, but I'll, I'll let him answer.
Okay.
The upstairs building does have a public control room for all medical supplies and then, you know, our fuel pump, everything up there that, that we would, wouldn't have power to, other than ash, it's all, it's, it's supposed to be operated anyway.
Still, this challenge, I just want to know some, some better reasons.
Brian and I only met with the sheriff's department once, I don't know if y'all met with any of them. Dwayne Allen, if they'd come talk to y'all, if y'all want to talk to them about any of their items here?
Of course, you know, these two items here have, are kind of non-negotiables. We've already approved the three, three trucks and the Zerker software, so those are kind of off the table. You know, the, the HVAC units for the jail, I think those were kind of presented as a, uh, they're old and that was a recommendation by David. I didn't hear that they were not working, just that they were having some issues. I think the evidence room ventilation system, we went ahead and told them, go ahead and get that, uh, because I don't think that that was going to cost a whole lot. I think that was, I think that was a, a pretty big estimate of $2,000.
Go ahead and do it and get it knocked out this year.
Right, and that was just in, in response to, they're, they're seizing a lot of drugs and have cases of fentanyl and things like that, and it's right there next to their offices.
Starting to smell bad.
So I think we could probably cross out the evidence room ventilation system because the last word I had from them was that they were going to go ahead and get that part done.
Yes.
Well, these other items, not that much, but they add up.
Right, well, the TASER payment, we've got to make, the five additional tasers, um, you know, was the, I had a question and they haven't gotten back to me yet, was, you know, can we add the five additional tasers onto a payment schedule like we did the other tasers? Why do we have to buy them outright? And, and so I'm waiting for an answer back on that. You know, the, the other two items, the four rifles for the SRO officers, that's a new thing, they haven't had rifles there. These are going to be stationed at the school campuses. The school was providing gun safes, is what I understand. And then, of course, they're wanting to do the swap out for the Glock 9s millimeters from what they've got right now, of the 40s.
How many of them were there?
We calculated, I sound like 30 of them, I believe.
30, 31.
And that's the net price after the trade-in, because the distributor is going to buy back our equipment. And of course, what they've, what they've said too is that there's a downstream effect of that too, that the, the ammo is cheaper for the 9mm than the 40s that they're carrying now.
Well, that's true, that's like 216, 217 a pistol, that's pretty darn cheap for pistols that should last a long time.
Agreed.
Well, that, that price reflects that.
Yeah, that's the best.
Well, with all their requests, you know, makes sense, but it all adds up as much. And we already obligated the biggest part of it.
So you not think, are you, are you implying that, I know it adds up, I don't disagree, we should stick with the things that we've already got approved, the Zerker software, TASER, and the, the three?
I think we're going to, yeah, we got, we've got to stick with what we've already obligated, but somebody's going to have to give somewhere.
Well, I, I would think that the, you know, my first reaction would be the HVAC units, because again, nobody's knocking on our door saying they need to be done right this minute. They're just saying, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, you were in the meeting, Judge, I mean, it was...
Right, worried about gas and carbon monoxide, things like that for some reason.
Yeah.
I don't think jail standards have recommended it yet, and I don't think there have been any acts on issues or anybody had, had any issues.
And if, if it's a carbon monoxide thing, I mean, you can go buy those alarms, you know, a whole lot cheaper and...
I guess it's hard to debate when nobody, when the other side's not here.
Yeah, sort of like my point earlier.
Or it's easier.
Well, if there, if there's not a real issue, you know, even if we had to replace one of them throughout the year, we could hunt the money up somewhere.
Right, I mean, it's not, you know, I know that the expo this week is, their office is working without air conditioning. You know, it's, it's not that situation at the jail. I mean, they're, they're operating in, and like I said, it was just a recommendation of David Young, and I'm not discounting that, I'm just saying that there's not an immediate...
A lot of questions coming up. Nobody's here to answer questions.
So, somebody, I don't know who he's talking to. I just want to go to you in this town. Put a question mark behind some of them, they'll be back the next time.
All right, we'll catch it later.
So we can talk to someone that's here? Darlene? Yeah? On, on your, on your carpet, if we move you up here, you know, is that a have-to right now to do something?
Oh, I hadn't heard about that, did you?
Yeah.
We hadn't heard about it.
He called me a price on the phone, so I didn't do anything about it, and I told him this year, he was going to come in that day, we need an estimate, he still hasn't shown up. So no, it's just a matter of his folks' bad.
Okay, I didn't know whether, because hopefully we'll get going for long up here and we might rearrange this, your office. Don't you think, Judge?
Yep, if we're able to sell the building, get some money in the bank.
And then also, another department head wants to talk about security. Why are we going to go on security?
Well, I had actually brought it up to Larry the other day because whenever I had initially kinds of budget, or not the budget, the initial budget meeting with Brian and the judge, I did not request for security in mine, just because I, I was under the impression that it was going to be taken care of as like for the whole annex, but I don't know, I don't know where everybody stands with that. So, and, and the only reason why I questioned it was because I noticed that Darlene, and I want to say the JP's office?
Yeah.
Put it in their budget, and I thought, well, wait a second, why is it just certain departments that are doing that whenever it should be considered as a whole?
JP's are wanting to put in protective glass in front of steel there, they want to do more in their office, and we're always talking about doing the whole annex. We've discussed many times, locking down everything except that one door, where you enter through that door, uh...
I just got back from school and we had a roundtable discussion based on our budget. Anyway, all of them are down to like one entryway into the offices, one public entrance. All the other doors are locked.
But, you know, it's, it's always something that gets brought up and then it just kind of gets shoved under the rug and nothing ever really gets done about it. And we collect a security fee, so why isn't that being utilized? Or is it, if it's being utilized, what is it being put towards?
Well, I mean, we've been doing security enhancements all along the way, I mean, there have just been...
Little here and there.
Right, I mean, and like we talked about last time, I mean, we could, we could put, if you notice in, in the budget right now, in the capital improvement section, we, you know, we do have a, an amount in there for security. But, you know, we could throw 10 times that amount and still it not be...
Well, it doesn't matter how much you got in there, we need to come up with a plan, that's the point.
I agree. Now, once, once the tax assessor is, got a separate location, I mean, she's the most customer-oriented department.
Far as locking down doors.
Correct. Once she's gone, you know, we could literally lock, lock this building down pretty, you know, to one door without having a whole lot of... down pretty, you know, to one door without having a whole lot of pickups.
And we can lock them down now, but he, like if Jeff or somebody's up there at this metal detector, and somebody comes through with a gun and they're going to get their license by, by our state boys, they have to let them go by through the metal detector. Of course, you know they got a gun, you know they're in the building with a gun, but we can't stop those folks.
It would start, I mean, it would protect...
The other problem has been up to this point, who's going to take the liability, responsibility of the employee? Who's going to, you know, have, will we rotate constables, off-duty officers, sheriff's department? Will the person ask your sheriff's department covering the sick time, vacation time, eight, well, actually nine hours a day, because you've got to have the lunch? I was wanting to do the front door, I've been informed several times, we have to let them in the back door, because that's the only place handicapped accessible, so we have to lock down the front door and the two side doors, which is easy. That's relatively cheap. I mean, you know, $2,000, we've already done it...
Talking about having a security guard there all the time.
Yes. Move the metal detector we already have over to those doors, and go ahead and set it up where everybody comes through that metal detector when they enter this building. And if they've got a concealed license or open carry gun license, then, and they're had to get their tags, then we'd have to let them through.
Or they want to rent the same your citizens.
Yeah.
I mean, would it, would it be too difficult to put a ramp in, in the front to make that wheelchair accessible, so that we could close off the other entrances and make that the only?
Probably relatively cheap. Concrete on one side, I guess, one side or the other, I don't know. We have to look at it.
Is there no game you can't park it up there at all?
There, you come around over here, you know, they've got that little ramp, they come around over here, but then they can't get up those steps. That's the problem. And they can't get up this step, they have to go all the way around over there, you know, where you actually come up the ramp and then you come in the door. I know, people hadn't complained about it for 20 years, I know, but still, the minute we lock that door, then they'll start complaining.
Wasn't cameras in the hallway saying you've got everything locked down, except for that door down there where the metal detector is? If someone's in and they are armed, I mean, to my office, are there cameras along the way, so they could be monitored by that security guard where they're going?
Well, they'd have to be monitored at the, right now, they're all monitored at the dispatch center. That's the only place they're monitored. That could probably be set up, where you could have a screen up here, where all them cameras get kicked back to that screen, because, you know, you can set up a screen like that with 24 cameras on it. But, yeah, right now, it's only monitored at the dispatch. But probably in your meeting, you found out, all across the state, there's a lot of discussion and argument soon.
Well, I was like the only county that had more than one access.
Right, right.
Where you have court.
So I guess I just said a whole hell of a lot, not to accomplish nothing really. But it has been discussed at many different levels, but nothing has happened.
But isn't there supposed to be a security committee?
Yes. We're supposed to do that in January, February, they hired the state, hired a guy with TAC to do it, and he was on a come around meet with all of us. He realized that he had his hands full, he went back to TAC and said, hey, you know, we've got problems here, this ain't going to get solved in six months. So, yeah, the district judges are supposed to be the ones taking, running with it. I met with the district judges, they said, you take it, run with it, do what you want to do over here. They're happy with what's going on as far as their court system. So, yeah, it's supposed to be like me, Andy, you, Darlene, Paul, you know, whoever, one commissioner, you just sort of form that committee. It's supposed to be headed up by district judge, if you read their statute, how they've got it laid out. But I don't think that's going to happen here, you know, it'll be headed up probably by commissioner or myself.
Which I know too, at one point, we didn't even have the metal detectors running during civil courts, correct? It was just only criminal, so...
Yeah.
I mean, civil courts are usually the worst, I mean, especially with family matters.
And probate courts. Sometimes probate can get pretty extensive.
So did that change? Do, do they have deputies down there during civil courts?
Are y'all present during any civil courts, except for bail?
Always civil.
It depends on the case and what kind of intelligence or information we have on to it. It could be, it could be a simple, there's time for them to call and say, hey, can we have two? We've had as many as, we had one where we had more deputies up here than we, more law enforcement than we did parties to the suit, literally, because of what we, the information we've got. But it's, you know, we're faced with a, it's hard, based on past experience, work with security systems and controlling access, security equipment, we're just not configured with, without shutting down all the one, one deal. Manpower becomes an issue, availability of manpower. It's nice to say, okay, Mike and I can both be at all JP courts, and if we're out there, sheriff's department will cover it for us. I think next week for that, I'm going to say that, we got district, not next week, we got district court, I'll be in a training class, that means I, if it was a civil case, that would leave Mike. If they've only got three deputies, they get a major accident, now they don't have, you can't guarantee without staffing or security.
Right.
Of course, building security, you need the staff.
Well, the court, when you have, that'd be simpler than what you're talking about.
Yeah, of course, of course, the reason, I mean, other than, like I said, the civil, district court, we know you're going to have people here for that criminal force. We know we're going to have people, because there's bad guys here. You're right, you get a divorce in there, you get a, somebody contesting who owns a smoker. As I say, you get one boat, you get a probate, a contested probate, you don't know what's going to happen.
Right.
But it still doesn't solve our problem about the day-to-day operations of a courthouse.
If we had to lock down the staff and had one metal detector, then that'd take care of the person being there.
But you're looking at 4.2 people.
To handle.
To manage it.
Right.
I've got a recommendation, of course, nobody's liked it, but if more people was armed in this building, that might solve the problem. They're willing to use it.
I know some of it off.
Well, let's start that way. Let's, let's start that, let's, that could be the beginning. County pay for their lives and whatever it takes. Put a sign up, say you're armed.
And you're showing risk.
Yeah. I think that the, the task team needs to be put together. Need to call them to a quarter. Need to establish a framework of what needs to be accomplished, start putting monetary values to it, and come up with a, a, a plan and contingencies based on possible moves we're looking at and things of that nature. But until we take some action, we're not, don't have any action. Yeah, we, we could budget over a year and never be doing that. And I get, are, are we mandated to do this?
Well, we're mandated to put the committee together, and the state don't really tell you when you have to have this done, they just tell you you're going to have to do this, and they don't know how they're going to figure out to do it, and how they're going to fund it, they just tell us.
And, but we have a, I think we have a ethical and moral obligation to, we, we need, we recognize there is a need.
Yep.
And we need to take action to, to that end of, where there, it might be a, a component of arming people in here, but we need to lay that plan out to, to do that. I feel, and there may be some budgetary things that need to be done there, but until you have the plan...
Employee, I think, is our biggest problem. We can solve just whatever problem, except the employee problem at this time, that I know of. Because we've solved locking the doors down, the people that can do that, because we've already dry run, trial-run it at sheriff's department, fire department, we know we can do that. We got the metal detector we can use until we improve it or make it better. That's simple. It's just the employees to staff it is our biggest problem at this time.
Well, but, you know, we've put like the, the comp scene system on the desktop of the, of the folks here. You know, we have closed the door by Suits' office, you know, so we have been making some small adjustments here and there, but yeah, I mean, we do have a lot of, a lot of gaps.
Yeah.
So that's a problem. A lot of what we have is reactive.
Portable gym.
Yeah, and you wouldn't put monitors, the monitors at the X-ray station, they'll be going up down the halls. That's a reactive monster, and it helps. Everyone in the courthouse being armed is good. I mean, it's a, it can be a deterrent, but it's a reactive.
Right, not proactive.
If you went to one door with the security system they had to come through, why would you have to have more than one person man there?
You really wouldn't. You'd just have to cover, you know, for their lunches, cover for their days off, their sick time, vacation. That all you'd have to have more than one.
Okay, we can buy one down there.
It was what we currently have.
Good county, good county.
Hey, hey, hey.
They hire them and dedicate them, you know, to that job.
Somebody has to go to bathroom, I mean, somebody, you can't just go up, throw a sign and walk away. It's a two-man job.
Because then we talk to sheriff's department.
And that's, and that's, in their defense, that's really not their function as it stands today, for security. They're not designed to accommodate courtroom security.
Not designed, but it is the sheriff's responsibility, right, for courtroom protection and security, the courtroom itself.
A little bit by, by...
I believe by statutes, that's the courtroom.
Statute, they're required to house prisoners by statute. I don't know if they're required to provide courtroom security.
I'd have to dig in that again, but I think he is.
See, for us, see, we're, we're required to provide justice for them.
Right. Y'all go to additional training now than you used to, right?
Well, we've got it coming up, Hood County Constable, or Protection Constable Association trying to get it scheduled for grand jury.
Because y'all are receiving additional training to be certified to...
We have to have, we're going to have to have, Kiko is mandated courtroom security.
All right, I, I think it might help even if the constable was in this building, if their officer was here.
We could do that.
We'd talk about that.
Paula would be on her own, she'd have to get armed.
If we're open over here.
I think it would help, be one of, pretty well on duty.
Yeah, you can, like I said, anything you can get in there, you know, they could...
Yes, but honestly, on that long...
It can mitigate damage, you know, if you, the more the fence you have, it just doesn't serve the long-term goal of keeping a happy city. But based on a few years' experience of, of developing security plans and, and access controls, this building is a nightmare.
Yep.
It's just, it just wasn't, in the days when we didn't, did this, this building, we didn't live with the world, we didn't...
I was saying, in their defense, when they did it, it wasn't, yeah.
No, it wouldn't have any difference.
Yeah, because there's, there's no office escapes out of this building, I mean...
The world has changed.
Yeah. So we got a lot of work to do on that one. Well, really not as much work as we do staffing and making it happen. That's the work.
You know, we're, you know, one of the things, you know, obviously like employee IDs and stuff, we don't really need that, because we're small enough, we know who belongs and who doesn't. You know, the, but, you know, having access to offices, if we wanted to go with, you know, the pass keys or the, the, trying to beat the magnetic cards or whatever, I mean, for certain office spaces or whatever, and then that software tracks who goes in where or what.
And the software that we're buying, where we can intertwine, match the fire department with the sheriff's department, where you can program all the badges out of one, that software will work here too, along with the major program. We just don't have that in place yet. Right now, they're independent of each other, but I was told the software was bought. I don't know why it hasn't been implemented yet, I won't go down that fight, you know? But, and that's what we do there, you know, you've got one for the main door, you've got one if you go into dispatch, you've got one if you go down in the main administration. It's all separated by offices. Of course, my sales and Darlene's, we couldn't shut people off from, you know, the main doors, but you could shut them off from coming back in their, their areas somehow. And that, believe it or not, is relatively cheap, it's like 800 bucks a door.
And that's kind of what we did with the JP's office, we created that barrier and with the cipher lock for them, so...
And with the money we've got in there for security, we could actually do this entire building, except for staffing this year. Just the staffing's what we have to work out. Now, that probably don't help or puts you at ease at all, but, yeah, that's what has been led up to.
And we discussed some exits from Darlene's office and...
Back in Larry's office, yeah, doing a doorway through there.
Heard more good than that, though.
Well, if something happened at the front, then they have somebody getting out there.
They need an outdoor.
Because of that hundred block.
Be outside, but put a steel door, the panic bar, if you can't enter, but you can exit.
They can go out behind the...
Well, I guess, whether we...
The shelves would have to come in.
What the future is on, on this office, they'll, they'll need an outdoor anyway.
Yeah, if that's the district clerk, then, yeah, they'll need a way out.
When we remind them.
Right.
So we could do that anytime.
But this clerk's office here would be the same situation, that only place you'd go there is...
Out into this hallway, maybe?
In this hallway, or out on the front sidewalk, but...
Man's wrist.
Doing something else on the run of the building then.
We do, but do you realize how hard it is to shut that door?
No.
And we actually tried it the other day, and you can't, you can't lock it from the inside, like, I forgot exactly how, it, it just wasn't going to work. It wasn't going to work.
Somebody would have to give one up for the team, huh?
Yeah, basically.
What you could look at is, is interior of offices, depending on the size of it, maybe you build it safe, or put up a safe room. Or in the case of where it's hard to shut that door, but sit back inside that room, frame it out, where you do have a steel door that you can retreat into and secure that door, instead of having to secure that heavy door. You just retreat back, but perhaps some is a safe room. There's, there's a flaw in having an exit door. If your plan is to actually re-camp it, what you do, you call something to make people go out that exit door, and that's where you're waiting at, is where they go out the back door. Again, this is an extreme example, but that's, that's what you think, that's what you think about, or, okay, what are the risks? You're better off in a confined room.
Right.
Where you can lock yourself up.
And, and nothing's sure for, I mean, you talk about extreme, I mean, if a person's, you know, they'll shoot, they'll shoot the person at the, at the metal detector.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, and come to the building. I mean, if they're, if they're determined...
The first guy you're going to take out is the guy with the gun.
Some of the training films you watch, that's what they do, they took out the whole front glass, then they come through, they took out everybody standing there at the metal detector, then they come on through. I mean, yes, that's extreme, but that's some of the training films that you go through, granted.
I mean, and that's what we've learned in terrorism training too. I mean, if a person's willing to give their own life, there's no stopping.
You got to kill them.
Here, go on, they're going to do whatever they want.
If, if more people are armed, it makes you think more.
It actually calls for a threat analysis, what they, what they call a threat analysis in, in determining what is your threat and then your risk. I mean, it gives complete risk and consequence analysis, and what's the risk of this happening, of this threat? What's the risk of this threat? What's the consequence of this happening? And then you start building a place around that. Like Ryan's saying, a guy can come in, but that's why you have two people. You're going to shoot the first guy. What he says, well, the second guy takes him out, that's not necessarily true if he's scared of losing, and you've got to do handguns. But, but that's how you work it down, top to bottom, is what's your most likely, our most likely risk is somebody that doesn't like county judges.
Yes.
I can't really see that.
Yes.
I don't know why.
Yeah, you can. Yeah, you can.
Kind of the justice piece.
Yeah.
Or the constable that just went and picked him out of his house.
There you go. I like that one much better. Well, anyhow, we will keep trudging on through.
Yeah, it's, this is going to be probably in the next 10, 15 years. I mean, this is going to be the never-ending...
Every year, we'll approach something new.
Okay, with all that said, what are we doing?
Well, we can put together a committee. There's a lot been done that a lot of people don't even know has been done. As far as what I just told you here today, I guarantee a lot of it didn't know what we had moved toward. Now, I'm trying to keep it a secret, it's just us trying to come up with some solutions. So we can put that committee together, and we can listen, and we can talk, and we can move forward with the...
I mean, our proposed budget has a $50,000 line item. I mean, our proposed budget has a fifty thousand dollar line item for security enhancement.
We can go ahead and put electronic entries, you know, on these side doors, and then the people that come through side doors will have badges that they use once we lock down the front door, and then the back door will come through metal detectors. We can head down that path.
I'm just saying, I let the committee, put the committee together.
Yeah.
If that's one of the outcomes of that committee, then.
Yeah.
We need to sure, make sure we got the funding available to, to do that, and, and then, uh, identify whatever else, and then, you know, future budgets, you're gonna have to.
Address it again and again.
As time goes forward.
Could you check to see if everyone has that, uh, alarm thing on their computer?
The cop scene?
Yes, that's supposed to, because I just.
Really?
Phyllis does either. I'm thinking there's probably a lot that's.
Yeah, but you mentioned that.
I mean, it got partially intimated, and then it dropped.
Yeah, I know. The training started on one end, didn't ever quite make it to the other end. All right. We can get Eddie on that, cause he can implement all that and train everybody. Everybody in your office has it on the door, right? Is everybody in your office except Phyllis? Michelle, is everybody in your office?
Everybody in my office has it, I'm guessing.
Is it supposed to be all set up for my location?
Yes. Uh, Vincent's supposed to be where you could use it on your phone, and that never comes through, isn't it?
But, um, I was really concerned that there were bad locations.
It's supposed to have a golf course, the expo, road barn. Library, we can do it to left, you know, the computers, but yeah, a lot of that just. But we can get our new IT group on that again.
Well, we're.
There you go.
We're adding to the budget quite a bit.
Yeah, we are.
Instead of taking so long.
Well, your equipment, Commissioner Curtis came down and made a change to the golf course, uh, on that generator to five hundred dollars. And so we're down to one point two eight five oh seventy-eight on the equipment list.
What about the expo? We haven't talked about it. The vacuum and the security cameras.
The vacuum, I'm gonna say we need it.
I'm gonna say, as John would say, is that a one or is that a need?
I think that's a need because of the manpower, man-hours, or time required to do that can substantially be cut. Which will free us up on other areas down there. I, I gotta, what about the security cameras? If we get all the doors fixed and repaired, do we need security cameras down there for the, for the entire facility?
Well, you know, I, that's a, I don't know. I mean, you know, a lot of, a lot of the expense on that security camera was not the exterior cameras, it was that high-dollar tilt, zoom.
In the middle of the arena?
Right, with the joystick and all.
Which has nothing really to do with the security, right?
It really.
Wasn't that an advertising thing? Didn't he say something about he could advertise with that? You're in agreement that that's not a security thing, Jeff?
It's not. You're, it, once they're in there, they're in there. And, and every time you put a camera in, a camera is no good as far as detection if you don't have somebody looking at it. All, just like at Central, a CAS. That's why, you know, CAS has dedicated operators. That pantill zoom is, is, might let you see that they went from here to here, but it's, if you have cameras on your perimeter at your entry points, you're gonna get more good out of them from a security perspective. And that's where you're gonna be able to get at least the description of someone.
Jeff, tomorrow, can we explore this?
Yeah, in, in, it's more for following up, see who came through there, instead of having it monitored. Yeah, but you're, you're not monitoring it.
With your, with your door cameras, you can go back and look and say, it happened at this time, we had three people coming in, they were wearing this. It's, it'll let you see where they went to, what, you can follow their path and say, okay, let's try to look.
Yeah, but a, a cheap game type camera will do that for you too. A cheap game type camera sitting up there will do that for you too.
With a, with a game type camera, you know, you're always having to go down, check, pull your.
Well, yeah, but as far as you going back.
Basically, yeah, it's no more, it's no more than a game camera. It's after the fact. It's a reactive measure.
Did the car.
It's to help solve the crime. A camera is not going to prevent the crime because you're not, you'd have to wire an alarm to it.
Yeah.
And then you've got to be able to get to that alarm in a timely manner to interrupt what they're doing. Uh, and that's not a feasible expectation.
Well, I, I'm pretty sure, well, me and John would have.
I got a question more about that fifteen thousand.
But that fifteen thousand, I'm sure is a double hour thing, monitoring off the.
I don't need to speak out loud about stuff.
Computer and his phone.
Oh, John, tomorrow, you and Kenneth on this vacuum, can you, can y'all come up with a savings on, what it'll save?
How much labor and savings saves?
Yeah, okay.
You know, and then, you know, under Pro Shop, remember I've got those ten carts there that really, you know, that was just my suggestion.
Well, explain that again.
Well, you know, the, the conversation turns in the budget that he was saying it was time to replace the entire fleet. And I questioned, you know, the why, and, you know, the answers that we were getting were, you know, where they were approaching five years old. Well, that didn't mean anything to me. And, you know, that our, our repairs and maintenance expenditures are gonna be going up, tires, tubes, uh, you know, those type of things. Windshields. And so, you know, the, the question that, or, or the, the reality that I had was, okay, well, maybe what we need to do is maybe think about, you know, infusing new carts into our fleet on an annual basis, and then culling out some of the, the, the bad ones and selling them in small chunks to the public. And, you know, cause they're gas carts, I mean, if they can identify, you know, we bring in ten, sell five, we've increased our fleet up now to a hundred and twenty-five net. And we've infused five new ones into there to extend the life of the fleet. You know, with all of the gated communities, Pecan, De Cordova, I mean, I, I feel confident that we could sell five used gas carts and recoup some of that money.
I, I think this needs to go back to the same thing as you're replacing the pickup run down the road. Somebody needs to keep account of what kind of money being spent on that cart before you get rid of it.
I agree.
And see that it justifies to replace it.
And also, when we were in negotiations about electric or gas, we went towards a gas because the longevity of these units was far greater than five years in reality. They were getting like ten years of service out of them.
I was hoping for eight, so I was hoping for.
So I don't think we need to cross this bridge until we get at least eight years on these things, because I'm not hearing negative things about high repair cost other than normal routine stuff. Well, we were repairing them that was leasing. We were not leasing. No, we were. We was, we, I mean, we were repairing them all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
Brian, I agree with you on ten, but I'm not even sure we need ten this year. I don't think we need any.
I don't think we need any at this point.
Check into that. But when we do, you're. Let's, let's talk to Doug.
It'd be a whole lot, well, you know, Doug, yeah, I mean, uh, I think it'd be a whole lot easier to infuse ten next year when we don't have a cart payment.
Right.
Cause I've still got one, this is the final cart payment of ninety-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
That, that we have booked here. And then when we start looking at fiscal year twenty, at least that ninety-five disappears, and it sure is easier to.
Yeah.
To swallow. Let's bring in ten and, and do that. But, so, so this was more of a conversation starter, to start thinking and maybe think, you know, how we can do that. So, we can take that off.
We, we still, we still need records of showing that it's time to buy five or whatever for an option.
So this is the fifth year?
This is your five, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not disagreeing where you can, cause we were sold that some of these are, after fifteen years, they're still in operation. They've gotta last until we get them paid for.
Yeah. Well, I remember y'all was going through that with Mike, they told you the last six to eight years, no problem. I remember the eighth year coming up many times.
The ten, the ten years was a golf course in Illinois that.
Shut down during the winter?
It shuts down during the winter, but, and then I, then I retorted with, well, then I'm expecting eight, and of course, you know, seven, oh, absolutely.
That's what I kept hearing was eight during, when y'all were going through all that discussion.
Now.
Especially with, with our maintenance staff.
Yeah.
And if you can get eight, then you've got, your five years pays off, and you've got three years to build up to pay for whatever you want to pay for.
And because they're not leased, I've got something to trade in.
Right. Or sell, trade in, sell whatever.
Whatever. Well, I mean, selling, selling five or ten is a whole lot easier. I couldn't sell a hundred and twenty.
No.
At one time. I had to trade those cookies then.
They'll take these.
Now, talking about the, the Pro Shop, I'm for putting carpet in there and, uh, letting that see how long. Cause we're never gonna build a clubhouse for a while.
And correct me if I'm wrong, did we tell them go ahead and take care of the freezer out of this year?
We did. I have not seen that, but we can go ahead and mark it out and.
Cause the freezer's supposed to be done, we just. Carpet, I bet we can get less than ten thousand, but.
I hope. Maybe don't need carpet in there, but. Scoreboard. Something else. What is that scoreboard?
Everybody's.
I don't know.
Scoreboard in the, uh, corporate pavilion area.
That kind of money.
We'll find out.
I know we can.
Even if he modeled, uh, yes.
You say the scoreboard's in the pavilion?
Yes, sir.
I don't see it. Now? Yeah.
The old one, yeah.
Well, maybe I can't see it.
It's, it's behind the stage.
It's faded out or something. It's a thing of, one of the. That's it? Yeah, okay. Needs to be tore down anyway. Okay.
And that's what he's wanting to replace, is that.
Thirty-five hundred dollars?
Well, couldn't we get someone to advertise on it?
That's always the question. I, I'm with you, but, you know, and I always get, well, who's gonna go sell it?
And we're trying to work on that too, but I hadn't heard back from the gentleman that's gonna take.
I actually got, yes, he's wanting to call, we're gonna call them this week.
Cool. Good deal.
Okay. So we took sixty K off that?
Took sixty, uh, sixty-one six off there, actually.
Took the freezer off, took the golf carts off.
So that drops down to one oh eight eight twenty-seven. And our grand total now is one two two three four seventy-eight.
So I'm worth half a million. Not quite.
Okay, the sheriff's here now, we can.
We can hammer him.
I think we done hammered him, he wasn't here.
Yeah, he wasn't here.
You just lost out, sure.
Y'all proceeding on with that evidence room ventilation?
We talked about holding off on the HVAC units until you, you come to us and you say, all right, this one's broke or whatever, this one definitely needs to be replaced. Is that right, guys? Yeah?
That came to us from David's recommendation that we need to start looking into it.
Right.
You'd be the one to ask them, we're in that critical.
Where and why?
Yes, sir.
And we had to leave Zerker, the evidence room, we're gonna try to take care of this year, Taser, we had to leave, that's a payment, five additional Tasers, I think maybe there was a question.
Right, I was, I was wanting to know, you know, could we do a, a similar payment structure with them instead of down without breaking out to that room to make that, find out what that is, yeah, so waiting on that.
SRO, officer rifles to be at the school. I guess there was nobody to discuss on that one. Uh, and the, uh, Glock nine-millimeter pistol swap-out for sixty-five hundred.
We decided that was very reasonable, go ahead and do that.
All right.
And when Mike did it, we looked at that and, uh, we saw how actually, you know, we can buy them back and half that cost.
Right.
So say, well, the nine-millimeter ammo is cheaper, uh, for some tactical things that nine-millimeter versus forty-millimeter would get in some type of key rock structure, you know, having to defuse someone. The biggest thing is that ammo and trade is still cheaper to purchase ammo.
And we do spend a lot of money on ammo. So, yeah, anything to help.
That recommendation come back from something out of your film, that you're on your classes.
Well, Brian, how you feel? We did the sheriff's, the expo, the fire, the golf, the Pro Shop. We hadn't talked about information technology, IT yet.
We haven't, we haven't circled back with Eddie on that, which is probably giving him a month to get his feet wet. So what do you want to do on those HVAC units? You wanna cross them at this point, or?
Cross them out until David comes back and says, yeah, I'll talk to David and say, hey, you know, evaluate ones down, you tell me we got to get it done, we'll get it done. That's pretty much what we've done for everybody else. Library, this house, you know, this annex.
I think the biggest thing his worry there was if gas gets back in the cost.
It's something to do with gas. I remember government oxides.
Government oxide gets back in the business.
Right.
Well, then you just open up the door to your evidence room that has the new ventilation system.
I got question marks by, um, a couple of items. Also, uh, firing in EMS on the generator. Did we, are we on the SCBA?
I've marked that out.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six thousand, yes, sir. So that means your fire department, we go three sixteen five.
Question mark on expo on security cameras, we'll get that answer tomorrow. I had a question mark on the trito trailer for the golf course, but.
I've got it marked out.
Yeah, uh, I, I didn't, when I talked, I don't know the reasoning, but Jeff told me something about it. And then, uh, Larry and I got question mark on the scoreboard at the Golf Pro Shop, uh, of course. Have we covered IT?
No, I was hoping we just talked about, we need to get back to Eddie now that he's got his feet wet.
Okay.
A lot of that would stay pretty close to where it's at. That's actually under his budget from last year.
It is. I mean, we were just, we were putting some stuff in there, you know, remember, we don't, we don't budget for, uh, actual equipment at the department level, PCs, laptops, anything like that. The only one that really has got that, I think we put in for the clerk for her use at the county court. Uh, but everybody else, you know, we don't, we don't put a individual budget. We let IT determine those needs, and he buys them and puts them in place. So that's why you've got PC's laptops for fifteen thousand dollars in there, uh, because that's county-wide. You know, we just felt like if the, with the contract just starting on June one, that there was probably plenty he didn't know, that he didn't even know he was gonna need. So we were trying to give him a little bit of extra time to, you know, as long as we had it. I think what we were talking about about mid-July, that we were gonna need to have some firm numbers before we moved in there, uh, to know.
And the switches and backup servers, cause we took it all back over and moved it back to the sheriff's department again, so it's all back in our control.
You're right.
Our next, our next scheduled anyway, or preliminary scheduled is on the twenty-third of July.
Brian Jones, we've got forty-eight thousand for your truck.
Yes, sir.
Is that new?
Yes, sir.
All right. I think we do need to look into the situation of finding not an old used, but a, something cheaper than that. I think we can find probably a used vehicle that would work for that situation.
That was the, that was the vehicle and then all the outfitting on it as well, the.
Well, the new, the new truck's gonna be forty-seven thousand, or right at forty, so.
I think what killed us is three-quarter ton four-wheel drive public, or I don't remember. I remember seeing all the numbers, what we did and why we did. Brian probably has boat quotes, I imagine, somewhere.
No, Brian doesn't have anything to have, I mean, he's got a ride, but still.
And I'll take blame for that, cause we could, Alan and I, Dwayne did what we did, and we moved all that around. So I'll take credit for that, or blame for that. Come on back, Larry.
We, we just, I just feel like we could probably come up with something else, that's been in this.
The one I got is for 43,000, something like this for five, I think, maybe a radio, but I think we've got a spare.
Well, now there's.
I've got a separate line item for a radio, here is the, uh, there's the quote from Defender Supply at 44093. And then here is the quote by Wildfire. And the Wildfire quote is 4881618.
I think that's the original, that's not the one that after I. Yeah, that was the first one, and I tend to go and take a lot of that stuff out there.
From Wildfire?
Yes, so they were within 1,700 dollars, and Wildfire was cheaper than that.
Okay.
But Defender had graphics package, including that quote from Wildfire, didn't it?
Okay.
You and me and Brian can get together and re-discuss and redo the bids and.
What did we give for that pickup? That we bought for the golf course?
Uh, right at 22,000, right, the actual, uh, Caldwell County Chevrolet, or Caldwell Country, uh, through the buy board. The truck, you can see, they've got a price of 33,800, and that's on a 2019 Chevy 2500 HD four-by-four crew cab. Gas.
Did you, did Brian tell you what he needed?
Well, Mark did the wants, and Brian cut it down to a lot of just the needs.
It's a, it's a baseball.
And I'm not trying to be sarcastic, but yeah.
Well, he's the man.
Yes, yes.
He needs that.
Yeah, he needs the vehicle, I know that, but.
Right.
We need to look at the avenues of.
I'm not arguing that at all, I'm just, I just, I wanna make sure it's his input.
Right, sure.
Yeah, it has been.
That's the quote, Caldwell Country Chevrolet, is that through Wildfire?
That is, it's probably through Wildfire.
Okay. And that's a, that's spec in the 2019 Defender is actually a 2018, or maybe a misprint on there. On their, uh. But that's, that's the.
That was the, what was the size, 48, what was the?
Well, this was the original quote, 48, but Brian is saying that they trimmed that down to 43.
Uh, Kenneth, I'll not disagree with you, Ken, but this should last him a long time.
Yeah, but it'll add up for cutting back, if we cut back a thousand dollars off of these, that's, that's all I'm getting at.
What you're saying is it'd be worthwhile, looking out there, seeing what a.
Yeah, see what you can find in whatever you.
Low mileage.
Yeah, low mileage truck. Of course, I, I don't agree with the 100,000 mile thing, I don't think they were out to 100,000 if they'd been taken care of.
You know where I stand on that.
Yeah.
And we can look at that 33 and see what we can do and not do on that 33, between 33 and 43, and see what he needs or has to have on that, and go from there each year.
I, I, I know of his equipment thing, but if with the initial truck, if we can save even 23,000 dollars on the initial truck.
Yeah, that might save you about 10 maybe right there.
Well, we can go ahead and knock that, it's just a discussion.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's where you come up with 33, right, the buy board?
It's, it says it's a buy board purchase, yes, for that Caldwell Country Chevrolet, it's through buy board, for 2019.
And we just have to see what we had to add to that for equipment wise.
Who put equipment, the, what you're saying.
What happened to the equipment we had in the command vehicle before?
That, that command vehicle's been redeployed to the fire department, they're using it, that truck is going around.
Right.
So all that equipment stayed with that truck, is what you're telling us?
Yes, sir.
The what, what equipment we're talking about is lights and.
Sirens.
Yeah, stuff like, yeah.
Radio, whatever graphics you want on there, which can be pretty beneficial.
I think they redid all the graphics on that truck.
Yeah.
Now, we'll have to find somebody to put this, they're just selling you a truck, and you'll have to find somebody.
Well, and that's that Wildfire group, I mean, Wildfire is who does the customization, um, you know, to your specs, I mean, you tell them what you want, and they.
So that's who you're buying the truck from?
No, sir, we actually buy the truck.
I guess my point is that we, if we found a good use with low mileage, we'd still have to get these other people to put it together.
Correct.
Yeah, we need to break that out and see what that would cost, what he needs, put to another truck, if we can save some money on the initial truck.
Because Defender and Wildfire outfit them, right?
Correct, now Defender is, is part of, um, uh, Five Star Holiday Chevrolet.
Sam Beck or somebody.
Right.
So they want to say the truck and outfit it all together.
Right, they, they, they don't break out truck and, and, and.
They want the whole.
Well, they bound to have used, if it fits our spec.
They might.
That spec may be our divine, but.
They might, Defender, I don't know.
Yeah, I think I even had, Brian, I had you contact them, see if they had one that maybe somebody ordered that didn't take delivery on or something that we could, you know, get maybe a good price or something, but they didn't have.
If we get a cut one and a half million dollars, we, we hadn't got there yet.
We're squatting neck.
We almost got to a half, we ain't got to a half yet.
I said that once, you jumped all over me.
Need five more thousand on a half million.
Neck's water out.
So I dropped that down to 45, which brings our capital equipment purchases down to 1.196.
So you did drop that half a million.
478.
What's that again, Brian?
The, the capital equipment is 1, 196, 478. And that automatically populated over here, so we're now down to 12,961, 355. Proposed, uh, still, still about 600,000 up from the current year's budget. And I'm still working through some payroll numbers, so I got the payroll report from the clerk's office, uh, the treasurer's office on Thursday, and started running through the numbers that I have not populated all of them yet.
Is that on 2% and everything else, all right.
And then the schedule increases that people are off on their anniversaries and stuff like that.
Right.
It does not include any elected official, kept those separate, kept elected officials right where they are, um, that was a separate discussion for you, John.
Oh, another ballgame.
Indeed.
On this sheet, this was the, uh, tax calculation worksheet?
Yes, sir.
Is, has that been, would that change with this new and webbed?
Yes, sir, I, I have looked at that report, the judge, and just.
It didn't go up much, it only brings in 10,411,775 dollars. I think we were about 10,300,000, let's go around on the other numbers. Sad, when 100, 200,000 don't mean much.
Yeah, when you talk about this being.
I know beans are beans.
You know, if you're sitting here and looking, um, you still got 33, you still have 33 million under protest, if you look under that last column there. I think that might be Andy's house. But he's, uh, what, if you look above that, what's said a taxable loss, uh, 23 million, what that really means is, he figures of that 33 million will actually, it's not really lost. He figures will probably, that's his probability analysis, that we'll probably get 23 million value out of the 33 that's in protest, so, you know, it's, it's crap sheet, he doesn't know, but he puts number in there just to my reference.
It's always the same few that do it every year.
Indeed.
Every single year.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we have one year left, it's a really big number, but, um, uh, you know, some of those hearings are gonna go out, they have, you know, they have constitutional timings and statutes to object, they can take it to court, or we're all well aware of all those. But those are just a combination of a, of a lot of different properties. So. So I'll, I'll start looking at these.
So, just for conversation purposes, we, you quoted a number, 12 mil, we can round that to 13 mil for conversation, okay?
Yes, sir.
13 mil. Total budget for 2019. Hypothetical number at this point.
Yes, sir.
If I look at this sheet. And look at one cent, two cent, three cent, four cent, five cent increase.
Yes, sir.
I see no number that matches 13 million.
Well, because remember, we have other sources of revenue.
Okay.
Other than property taxes.
Okay.
Uh, you know. Conservatively, by another mil, 1.5, uh, come in for other fees, uh, court fines, uh, we have.
He must took it out of his computer, I ain't never seen it. He must took it out of the computer, I hadn't never seen it.
Yeah, I don't.
It's on the front page of your, of your financial statements every month, every month, uh, and of course, delinquent taxes aren't included in this property tax number two, because those, those show up on the, you know, because they're, they're collected as a gift, all we're dealing with is the current tax levy.
He handed it out.
No, you gave them off, it's, it's just on the screen, uh.
Oh, you printed it out, okay, I'm sorry.
Don't feel bad, I don't have it.
I, I also.
When I started talking, I didn't know what he was looking at.
I'm gonna make.
What's that update with the, with the certified numbers? I'm sorry. But where your, is that the page you're talking about, not seeing?
Yeah, the one he's going to make a fake.
I thought you were talking about the 1.5 mil.
No, the one he, the one to make a picture of.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With one penny, two pennies, three pennies, four.
Yeah.
And then the goldback rate is, is there.
Yeah, that's right there, that's what I haven't seen. Not that it wasn't on my iPad for me to look at, and I didn't look at it, but I didn't see it.
Uh, it was, it was strictly, I had this prepared for our discussion, uh, on the last meeting, and then Commissioner Curtis came down and asked for a copy of it, so I, I printed him off one, so I wasn't keeping anything from him, I promise.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, I didn't know what he was talking about, he's looking at. It's just.
I know what y'all is looking at. And I didn't see it up there either.
If it'd been up there, I looked up, I might could have grasped what he was talking about.
I can see it out there, I just can't see it in front of me.
Well.
I can't see it right here.
It's not as easy for me to see there as it has been.
You know, I can.
What page is the, tell him about, I finally found it.
Well, because we've got there, yeah, because we've got up there, it's, I don't know if I can get it.
I think it's about 18, oh, did you find it?
25, page 25.
He's got it just a little bit below 12 now, I mean, below 13, sorry.
No, it's over 13.
Well, his new revised number, sorry, Brian, we keep jumping around on you.
No, it says, not me.
Sorry if I interrupt you, they.
25, page 25?
Yeah, page 25, total expenditure, after he took off that half a million today.
Okay.
What'd you say it come up to, Brian, 12 million?
12, 961, 355.
Like John was saying, mine would say 13 million.
But actually, we subtract 1.5 mil from that.
As far as revenue necessary, no.
So.
What's in that other 1.5 mil?
Yeah.
That's, that's the other sources of revenue that the.
Okay, I understand that, so what's the total now?
Right, I, I mean, because what we're dealing with is the actual amount of property taxes, which is obviously, you know, the largest of all, but we also get, you know, fines and fees through the courses, those recording fees. Uh, license, uh, license plate registration fees.
Eleven point five is what we're really looking at. That's what Larry's looking for.
That's what he was saying, on the front sheet every month of that report, it shows all of our income.
All our.
So, if we go back to this sheet. Still, even with a four cent increase. At that 11, if I subtract a 1.5 from the 12, 961, it'd be 11, 461, 355. So we're still gotta do something.
Correct, there, you know, you've, you've got obviously a few choices, number one, you know, tax increase, you know, with that, reduction of expenses, um, you know, spend out of reserve, I mean, you know, a purposely past deficit budget, uh, you know, those are all.
One, one component though is, you haven't factored in any potential increase in salaries.
That, not at this point, not those are those numbers.
That'll make it go up.
Yeah, that'll make it go up.
And we've also got some contemplated, uh, retirements that, you know, with some higher paid individuals that will go down, but I mean, we're, we're not really talking massive dollars here.
Right.
Look like you're way into a jern, aren't you?
And if, if, say if we're, I mean, I budget's tight, we cut everything out, and if I take a 2% of 18 budget, we're only looking at two and a quarter of a mil. That would maybe left over.
I would, I would think that would probably be, be accurate, about 250, yeah.
See one thing.
Which usually is a lot more than we stop.
Right, I mean, we, we, we've cut a lot of the excess out of the budget over the past few years, we truly do spend about 18%.
We're cutting and still growing.
And it, I don't know if you can stop it.
No.
And, you know, the only place that we get to run to during the year, obviously, is our, our, our contingency line, you know, at 350,000 that we've got proposed budget in there, and, you know, that's. That's what we have utilized repeatedly.
It's a good thing we had as much as we've had this year.
Without a doubt, without a doubt, I mean, it's one of those things that we have to have, otherwise, we have to go through the whole process of declaring an emergency and opening up the budget, I mean, a, a lot of.
Yes, jump through hoops.
Right, and it's, you know.
Yeah, you've been 341 or that 350.
Well, no, that was what we, that was the adjusted budget, what we have, uh, we, that's what we have.
Oh, that's adjusted line.
And then we have transferred out of contingency, so now the, the, the number is 168, 250 is what we have left in there right this minute. Or as of that day.
Well, yeah, that's what I've been saying, you'd already spent.
Right, we, we have, we have hit it.
Hard.
Hard, of course, you know, we purchased that property next to the fire department, it was probably the, the single largest, but we also paid that Zerker down payment, and, you know, we, we've, we've hit it. But we've, we've needed it.
Glad we had it.
It's, it's really difficult, as you, as you all know, it's real difficult to sit here in July, anticipate what we're gonna need next February, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a very challenging thing, so.
Or next June.
Correct, so having that contingency is that, is that coverage. So, having that contingency is that, is that coverage to do that.
You know what? You know, it, it's... You think, one would think, that in trying to control your budget to a, a conservative number, it, it's somewhat annoying, I guess, in a way, that a four percent, a four cent increase in tax doesn't cover your budget forecast.
I think that is, that is part and parcel of the makeup of our portfolio, with it being such one large asset. You know, there's not enough rooftops to offset a major valuation difference. And if you remember, this is year four of that four-year agreement. So, I mean, that's the, that's the issue. But, but yes, I mean, it's a... And of course, all the rooftops, or the majority of the rooftops, have got one or multiple exemptions on them. Home status, disabled, that, senior citizen, things of that nature. So, you know, even, even a four cent change, we've got to look at that true taxable value that we're able to...
Well, this number is above our rollback rate.
Which one?
The eleven four sixty-one.
Oh.
Eleven million four sixty-one.
Yes, sir, it is. And that's, you know, and that's because, in prior years, when we have not done the effective tax, when we have not moved our rate to the effective tax, you know, we don't get credit for those prior years. It, it just, last year becomes the new base, you know, and so, it works against us in You know, when our effective tax rate goes up, and we choose to not increase the tax rate, then we basically are telling the calculation, no, we don't need that extra property tax. Leave it alone. So, we left it on the table back in the prior year.
Never to regain it again?
Never to get it again. No, sir.
And then next year, it can clip.
So, that's the, that's the gotcha. It can come back and get you. You know, it's, it's, it's real good to not have a tax increase, and I agree with you on that. But it, it can paint the county into a corner, and we can have a situation where you need it.
Are you still proposing one cent or four cents?
I, I recommended one.
Yeah.
You know, but, I mean, at the same time, we've got, we've got some gap to cover.
It was around three hundred and something thousand before that we was going to make up, right?
If you look at the red, yeah, the, just, just to kind of make up the difference.
Four two hundred and ninety, is that what? Okay. All right, that's it.
Two hundred and ninety-one, six ninety-six.
We should have that left over in this year's budget.
I can run those projections. I usually start running those projections after June thirtieth.
Right now, on the, the eleven four sixty-one, three fifty-five number, which is the latest, that's subtracting the one point five mil from the...
Twelve nine sixty-one.
Twelve nine sixty-one. Even if we instituted a four cent increase, we're still going to be three hundred and eighty-six thousand and change.
Where we are today.
At our current discussion, yeah.
We, we would have to remove three hundred and eighty-six thousand with a four cent increase to, to meet the eleven thousand seventy-five, three, three, three.
And that's not doing anything for the employees, right?
No. He hasn't figured in the employees yet.
He hasn't done anything for the boys yet. Just looking at all the other...
The only good news I can share with you is the fact that our early indications on our health plan are that we're not going to have an increase. We've had a good year. So, I'm always, I'm always open for good news.
You know, Brian, it's almost this dern if you do and dern if you don't on this effective tax rate. It's almost, it forces you, in some ways, that you almost have to do it, or you can get in trouble.
Correct.
After next legislative session, you will get in trouble.
You know, the, the effective tax rate really is not, it's not a good thing for us. What it really does is that it, it's really meant to protect the citizens from, say, a city of Frisco, who is just having these incredible year-over-year new improvements. And, and so, they, you know, their portfolio just grows by billions every year, and especially like Collin County and Denton County, so that their tax gets pushed down, because they get a larger portfolio. And just because you have these new improvements, you don't get to just absorb them. And, and so, it forces them to reduce their taxes. In our case, when we have values decreasing, the inverse is true. It's, it's pushing that rate up, and when we don't, when we don't take advantage of that, when we just say, hey, we're going to keep the tax rate steady, that, like I said, resets the, it's like the tripometer in your car, just reset it to zero again, and then everything's calculated on that new base.
And correct me if I'm wrong, if legislators had passed their four percent last year, we could only went up about one point six cents anyhow this year.
Correct.
If they had passed it, we couldn't even went up over two cents. So, if they pass next year two and a half to four percent, then we're stuck, just round it off to forty-five cents, you'll be stuck about two cents.
Ballpark, what we got in tax pool?
I think that the other day, I think one of them's got ten million, I think one of them is.
The general fund, we've got...
As of May third first.
That I haven't seen.
Fourteen, nine thirty.
Fourteen mil.
I can, I can pull it up.
It would be about ten, shouldn't it?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think above operating, it's like ten million something in it. Above beyond operating.
Maybe the golf course and figuring that out.
See what came out? Four hundred and fifty out.
That was all?
What, what's up? Thirteen eight oh one is what I'm seeing here.
Yeah. I need to back to my payroll for this one.
Thirteen eight, eight oh one. And of course, if you, if you notice our, our trends in the, in the past...
That's just a general fund. That's not count the compenex.
Right. But if you notice, because we, we put money into, you know, when all that tax money comes in, in January, which is this number here, that's a net deposit, and that's when it jumps up to, you know, fifteen million. This is last year's. You can see the rest of the year, we're having to pull from our savings account to, to continue to, to pay our bills and payroll and stuff like that. So, that is why at the end of September last year, even though we were at this same time period, thirteen million eight, we ended the year at ten million, three eighty-nine. So, you know, just on a trend analysis, between now and the end of the year, the treasurer's probably going to have to pull another three million dollars out of that to just continue to pay all the obligations.
Above and beyond expenses, somewhere around ten million left over.
You know, I haven't done my, my end of the year projections yet, but I'm, I'm hoping we have a little bit of, like, like Commissioner Curtis said, maybe about two hundred and fifty thousand or something. So, I'm, I'm really hoping I'll finish up the year at about ten, ten and a half, you know? I mean, we, we make progress slowly, but I'm trying to keep that forward, forward momentum My goal is, before I leave and retire, is that, you know, the county is, is aptly defendable against another situation like we had a couple of years ago, that we could outlast two years...
For the minimum of two years in the bank, yeah.
Without feeling any type of financial pressure. I don't want anybody to deal with what we've done. I'm playing on it. It'll, it'll get run out.
No, dream if you think you can get two years.
Sir?
I said, that's dream. That's, that's a...
That, that's my goal. That's my goal. And so, that, I understand that's going to take about twenty million in reserves.
Twenty to twenty-four, easily.
But that's what I would like to see.
Budget going up every year, more people getting this county.
No, no future court having to feel like they have to settle for a bad deal something because they're, don't have any resources.
The problem is, it, it's going to continue to increase.
Mm-hmm. Budget is.
The budget is. Right. So, but, but if I can achieve that base, then they can, they can...
But the court has to be cognizant of the fact that you have to use the effective tax rate, or we're going to get behind the eight ball.
I agree. It's, it's just a hard, I, I know, sitting in y'all's, I mean, just me recommending a one cent. I mean, I was understanding, they were talking about me on the radio, and people were catching me in the hall. So, I understand, you know, and I'm somebody who doesn't even have a vote. So, I understand it's a tough decision, sitting in your chair, to, to have to deal with the citizens and why there's a tax increase and things of that nature. I understand that. But you're right, Commissioner Curtis. I mean, that's, that's why it's there. For those, for those entities that are growing, it's, the effective tax rate is there to ensure that, that they're not making a quote-unquote profit off of the growth for, for decreasing values. It's to make sure that we keep up.
If I subtract a two percent, round it to a quarter of a mil, from that eleven four sixty-one, three fifty-five, that brings us down to eleven mil, two eleven, two fifty-five, just assuming we had that much left over in this year's budget. Hmm?
That two percent increase isn't in there.
Are you talking about two percent?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Assuming there's a two percent overage in the eighteen budget. I don't really have a feel, if we did a two percent cola, what number that would be.
You'll have that by the end, by the end of the week. I'm going to be updating that, bringing y'all the new revised report, instituting the changes we talked about here today, and also hopefully having those payroll numbers in, so that you can see. So that y'all have a good couple of weeks to kind of look through that before we meet in.
Hang on just a second.
I see two people folded up down here on this end. You're not waiting on me?
If we go, just looking at these, kicking these numbers around.
Yes, sir.
Assuming we had two hundred and fifty thousand, subtract that from eleven four sixty-one, three fifty-five, that gives us eleven, two eleven, two fifty-five. And then, if I look at the four cent increase, I'm looking at a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars that would have to be made up out of tax pool or somewhere to bring that budget.
Correct. So, we would, so what we would, you know, based upon that, we would be purposely passing the deficit budget of that hundred and thirty thousand. And then, of course, you know, thinking about under that two percent, same two percent, who knows? You know, we may not ever have to actually pull it. We're just going to have the budget contemplate at that, because, you know, when we pass the budget, we have this assumption, we're going to spend a hundred percent of every line item. You know, one employee change, now there's a ninety-day wait for health insurance, changes everything. So, you know, and we have employees move in and out, and so, those things, that's just one example. You know, utilities can, you know, we could have a milder time, and it could be anything.
That feel good? Not really. Not yet.
Well, I'm just, I mean, I can't stick my head in the sand and say, you know, it is what it is, and have we done everything?
No, we're still talking about this, but we haven't done everything we can do yet. Nope.
Yeah.
Nope. We're not going to go down that...
But we, we need to talk about this, so we have a feel for where, and what we need to get to. Well, if it's a hundred and something thousand dollars, we probably can... That's with a four cent increase. Tax increase. But then, we're looking at maybe a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on employees. So, that may be two hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah. I would have to, above what, what we could get with a four cent increase. So, anyway, we, we got some...
And we still have other places to look to get rid of some of this expenditure. By July twenty-third. Is that right?
And then we need to get on the twenty-seventh, I believe.
And then we publish it.
And you publish it on the thirty-first.
And then we come back and argue two weeks later.
Right. Then, then it really starts...
Then we really start arguing.
Yeah. Yeah. That's when it really starts getting real, in August and September, so... And then, of course, in that time period, too, we have to, I know you guys love this, because we talk about it every year. We've got on August tenth, excuse me, on August sixth, no, August twentieth, I'm sorry. August twentieth is when we have to vote for the publication of the quote, proposed tax rate. That's when it has to go into the papers. That's not the actual final vote, but if we, you know...
While we're looking at the vote.
If, if there is any chance...
The public don't pay a bit of attention to that either. That's the problem.
I understand. I understand, but we've got to...
The propose will probably be it this year.
So, we've got to do it, and then, of course, we'll have to schedule the, once we set up on the, the rate, we'll also have the two tax rates. But we'll have until August twentieth, the publication deadlines, to do the proposed
Well, Kenneth, I think it's back to you.
I'd make motion we adjourn this budget.
I have a motion to adjourn. You have a second? I have a second by Don. All in favor? Five, four, zero against, eleven nineteen. Larry, do you mind sticking around just a little bit? Michelle, Andy, Brian, Susie, Paula, Alan, I think you've even got involved in this at the very end of the day on another one. Do y'all mind?
I need a break.
All right, yeah, go ahead. Yeah. No problem.
Oh, you don't? Okay. All right.